Study session items. Public comments on study session, on study session related items. Is there any public that would like to come forward for five minutes? Okay. All right, we'll go right into discussion on blight enforcement at the City Manager, William Gamble, Police Chief Josh Glass, and City Attorney George Nail.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start off by inviting Chief Glass to come up. And I believe we passed out some updated blight reports. I'll just kind of give some background on blight enforcement.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you for having me. In front of you is the updated blight report for the last four weeks of the month of April. And again, I hate to sound redundant, but just so we understand the blight program, we have an officer assigned to East District. We have eight districts. The contact information's out to in the public. Our blight enforcement really started a month ago when the snow melted. In the last four weeks, our officers have written at least 13 citations. I think we've had three or four court cases already. And our blight enforcement is really ramping up, so to speak. This year, as we've mentioned before, we're actually using a GIS mapping system, which allows us to track our enforcement efforts and allows us to provide a visual of what type of houses, what type of blight, and then what type of houses. So, for example, blight, you have structure blight, junk vehicle blight, or rubbish, which is trash garbage. And we have, within the structure category, we're able to classify minor, moderate, and major. So we have an idea, are able to prioritize our blighted structures. And that's kind of how our blight system is set up. It allows us to track and prioritize blight. Also, we classify our blight structures, meaning what type of house is it? Is it owner occupied, owner unoccupied, long-term rental, short-term rental? I think it's unknown. So it allows us to kind of keep track of what the pattern is, what the trends are, and really document our blight enforcement efforts. So again, a month in, we've written 12, 13 citations. We've had some court cases. I think probably this year is we're going to have a lot of blight cases, a lot of citations, a lot of court cases. Thought processes, in 2020, I came before you, and I wanted to make sure that council understood the scope of blight. So we had one of our sergeants, Doug Van Sicko, drive around the city just to get a handle on how many blight cases we had. In 2020, we had over 300. So we knew what the problem was from the start. 2020 was a pandemic, people unemployed. So we use that majority of the year as an educational piece. A contact, educate people. Last year, the focus kind of shifted towards more of enforcement. We spent the previous year educating our public. Now we need to take more enforcement action. And now that we're into the third year of this model, our philosophy is if we have talked to you and educated the previous year, we're probably going to issue a citation right out of the gate. I think it's very reasonable. But again, that prevents us to be more efficient on enforcement. And some of these cases take up a lot of time. So if we spent all last summer working with a homeowner or a blight, then this year, if they haven't remedied it or had significant steps towards remedying it, then we're going to issue a citation and get them in court. And that's a little bit of a philosophical shift. So that's kind of how it started. That's our program, and that's where we are today.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Going forward, are you going to do the three-step process on new cases?
Three-step process?
Well, I mean, it sounds like, you know, 2020 was education, then there was 2021 enforcement.
It depends. If we've dealt with that person before, then we've checked the box for education, and we're going to move forward with enforcement. Now, what our officers do a great job of is because they work in individual districts, they can make that decision, is this person not complying because they don't want to? They physically can't? They financially can't? And that's why what the City Manager is going to talk about tonight and what the NRB possibly can provide is so essential. Because when we have those cases where someone can't physically remove their rubbish, having alternative solutions is important. If someone financially can't fix their house up, one of my officers issuing a ticket ain't going to do any good.
Right.
Let's find alternative solutions. Now, those aren't the majority of cases. But again, like I said, in 2020, police officers alone writing tickets by itself is not going to solve this issue. It's going to help set expectations and enforce it, but we have to have alternative solutions. And again, what the City Manager is going to talk about tonight and what the NRB potentially could provide is a multi-faceted angle to address blight.
Your districts, do they resemble anything of our districts? Not even close?
Try to do it geographically and then day shift, night shift officers.
Okay.
Be strategic in how we do that.
Okay.
So if I have an officer working night shift, they are assigned an area where there's less blight because they only have four hours daily.
Right.
Those type of things. And we have found after 2020, some districts were cut in half because two officers are needed for that district because there's so much blight.
Okay.
I have a question on the vehicles. Are they towed after so long?
If it's on public property, it's something different than private property. So which one would you like me to answer? Private property or public property?
Both.
So it's, it's...
If I guess anything.
It's a lot lower bar if it's on a public highway, a road. Okay? We have the authority to tow it within 48 hours, I believe, depending if it meets the qualifications. But, and one of the changes from 10 years ago is that if it's on private property, the process we have is we want a court order that gives us authority to remove that private property. So we're not going to have officers go on private property and deprive the owner of their property without due process, meaning a court order.
Okay.
And to be honest, in years past, we used to go and go in the backyard and put a bunch of stickers and pull them out. That's not our process today.
Okay. What if you have, what if it's like a landlord situation where you have permission to go and tow those cars?
If we have authority, then we can do it.
Okay. And then I got a question, like I know you and I have talked about it several times, like Fifth Avenue, I don't know what it is, the cart, the wagon, the cart.
Ford Street.
Yeah. Like, if it's on public property, I'm confused on how you can blight the owner of the property, not the owner of the trailer. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I don't know that you can. If it's on private property, then we take, if it's a repeat offender, we take enforcement action on the tenant and the landlord, as we feel it's a landlord's responsibility for repeat offenders. And the scenario you're talking about, as I've discussed with that particular landowner, if it's on public property, then it's very difficult to take enforcement action against that property owner.
That's just a, that's a weird situation, because I know that it was there in the winter time, and we talked about ticketing it for not moving out because it's obstructing the snowplows. I don't, I guess maybe you're not the, maybe you're the right person to ask.
We did take, is that the one we took action against? Is that, yeah, we did take action. You know, with the trailer, what, and they took the tires and put them in a trailer on the street. That's the one you're talking about? We did take action against just the tenant in that case. There was an attempt to ticket the owner, but it was ticketed incorrectly, and so we had to dismiss it. I think we probably could have went after the owner on the basis that it's his tenant that's maintaining that blight, even though it's in the city road right of way. But I think generally speaking, we would have only ticketed the owner for blight that is located on the property.
But I'm just wondering if they had, if they would have authority to tow that away? Like, if they're just going to leave it there for six months and then it's there?
Well, that's not under the, yeah, but that's not a situation under the motor vehicle code that authorizes towing of vehicles. That was a blight issue, and for a blight issue, we have to pursue it under our laws, our ordinances. And, you know, as opposed to a vehicle that might not be licensed and sitting on a public road or parked illegally that we could tow, this were, this was a situation with tires in a trailer that was dilapidated, which was blight and required us to pursue it under the ordinance. And we did, and they ultimately cleaned it up and then put the tires back again another second time.
It doesn't fall under like a vehicle because it has a license plate?
Well, I don't know. I can't recall in that situation if it was even hooked up to a vehicle. I think that, was the trailer just sitting there?
Vehicle, but it had a license plate on it. So I'm just wondering.
Trailer plate.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, we weren't looking at that as being, at least when it got to me, it got to me as a ticket for blight, which we pursued in court.
Okay.
So what you're seeing is a great example of what our officers do a lot of is repeat offenders. So tires off, tires on, couch in the front yard, couch not. So our philosophy shift is if you are a landowner and renting to someone and they're a repeat offender, you have responsibility to keep your property clean as well. So we're ticketing the landowner or the landlords or landowners as well. Now, it's got a little, we're still educating ourselves on ticketing property owners and LLC and how that works, but as you can see, it's very time-consuming to work those issues out.
You know, I might add to what Josh is commenting on. I always want the owner ticketed as well, because if we get an order from the court and the city goes in and expends any money to clean the property up, we want to be able to lien the property. And if we haven't joined the owner, we really can't lien the real estate because the tenant didn't comply with a blight or a blight violation. So we like to go after both where we can.
And I think the key that we, the direction I've given the officers is find your top blight violations, prioritize them of your district, and put your efforts towards those instead of having 30 of them. The top five, the most public, the most nuisance, the most viewable, and let's focus our efforts there, and then we get those addressed, move on. And so again, I think what the City Manager is going to talk about and what the NRB could provide is a multi-faceted approach to really impacting this, aside from cops writing tickets.
Okay.
I think that trailer is back there again, ain't it?
I think so.
So it's going to be the trailer, and then it's going to be tires and a couch. Tell that tenant it's kicked out, and that's why it's so important to hold that landlord accountable for that, because they are knowingly renting to those tenants. And they, they're culpable to a certain degree.
Well, and I think that, I completely agree with you, but I think part of the problem is trying to evict them because they keep going to court and getting an extension and it's like, it's like ever-ending extensions for some of it.
Right. I understand that.
Frustrating.
Not much difference with blight when we get extensions from the judge as well. So we also are frustrated, because where does the complaints go? The police? Why isn't the police doing anything? Once it gets to the court system, we don't have control of it. But again, we're the face in the community. So anyways, that's what we've done, that's what we're doing, and that's our philosophical shift. Are there any questions on any of that?
Just to clarify, on the trailer or vehicle issue during our winter time, would they get, what's the frequency that they would get that $40 ticket?
We, if we, we ticketed the trailer on Fifth Avenue.
Yeah.
My guys told me that they ticketed it. I thought it was interesting. Let's see if it flies. The ultimate goal is to find a solution, and I don't think, so if we find ourselves in that situation again, I think we'll probably sit down with the city attorney and say, what is a bigger solution here than writing alternate parking tickets to a trailer?
I guess the question is, is on our winter parking. If a vehicle doesn't move over several weeks, do we have a way of actually just having it towed away off of the street?
I haven't looked at that ordinance in quite a while, to be honest. And if it's not in the ordinance, it would have to be something under the motor vehicle code. I suppose they're parked illegally.
I don't know that our alternate parking comes with the authority to tow.
Okay.
Unless it was under state law, meaning it wasn't worthy, it didn't run, et cetera, et cetera, then we have authority to tow it. So, and we have those all winter. I mean, if I'm being honest, our officers write over 400 alternate parking tickets every year, and to people who've lived with their whole lives. And we get those offenders who get five, six a winter. So, but when faced with that trailer, we're, probably would focus more on the solution. How do we get it out?
How much is a ticket for?
Forty.
Forty dollars.
Bucks for parking.
I've gotten one. I moved my car in order to get a ticket, because I moved my car in the 31st to the first. And the, that ticket was right on there, so.
Member of my family got part of it as well, so.
I get numerous because I can't remember the dates of anything.
And again, talking about education, we go at least a month out and start putting stuff on windshields that tell you, hey, in a month's time, we're going to write tickets. So just consistent with our philosophy, leave with education. Is there any other questions on anything?
Are you ticketing cars in general that are not registered or just cars that are like blighted?
It depends if it's public or private property. The standards are a little bit different. If it's on the public roadway, it's not licensed or insured, then we would ticket that, the 48-hour notice, and then we would tow after 48 hours. It's a little bit different process if it's on private property. And George, if I'm incorrect here...
We have a junk car ordinance separate from our anti-blight ordinance that the officers usually pursue for a vehicle that may be unlicensed or someone's, you know, it's clearly inoperable that the officer will use as a ticket.
And the standard we use really is clearly inoperable. If you got flat tires, then we can cite for that. And that's what we do. We don't, we don't go on property more than tag it. We contact the owner, and if they don't remedy it, we'd cite them and give them a court and get a court order to remove that. So we have a judge's authority to remove the property.
So do you watch your car? It's sitting there with flat tires, got one on 15th Street, and it's been sitting there for a month.
On where?
On 15th Street.
Okay.
Between the Mac Park and Princeton Road.
I can tell you that the obvious ones we try to address, but our officers are really trying to, in their districts, address these blighted structures that are really, really obvious. And so I try to, if we get a complaint, we deal with it, or if we drive through our neighborhoods as we should every day, we deal with it. Other than that, we're more focused on the obvious things that people drive through our town and they feel. The house caving in on itself, or the backyard full of junk on, you know, Ramsdale, those types of things. We prioritize those. Yeah, if we get a call, we'll go investigate and take action, but their efforts are focused on prioritization. As we found out in 2020, we tried to tackle it all, and we didn't do a very good job, because like I said, we started with over 300 incidents of blight. If you try to tackle it all, you're going to have very limited impact. If you prioritize and really attack, and I use the word attack, but address, focus your effort on the things that are obvious that people feel, that's when we start having solutions and we start feeling the remedies. So I hope that answers your question.
And I think that's a good segue to the next section where, you know, we do have repeat offenders, and that can be something where, you know, whether it's weekly or in more frequency, we can re-ticket and check the box this end of the district court. Some of the things that George is saying, so he provided me a sample judgment. So the way our ordinance is written is that, you know, it'd be either they move it or the city will remove it, and then the charge would be a lien against the property. So this is a sample of that. And one thing we wanted to discuss with council during the study session was the idea of, you know, that is a capacity issue, like how often, you know, we see a couple of these issues where there's kind of ongoing, I'm going to bring up a couple of these blight examples, just debris, things like that. So at some point, you know, who's actually going to do the work of removing these items? And, you know, we can go to court, and maybe, George, before we go into next up, can you talk about what happens typically when you go to court for some of these?
Yes, and maybe I kind of give a little refresher on, because we have really three ordinances that deal with blight-related issues and talk about, one, we, two, we're not, haven't used since I've been doing this, one, we may be able to resurrect a little bit and use. But our standard blight provision is the Chapter 650, which is the anti-blight ordinance. And in that anti-blight ordinance, we have provisions that describe and define blighted structures, building material, junk, vacant buildings, and then it prohibits maintaining those types of blight, whether it's a structure, junk, you know, anything that falls within those definitions. Our process with that, and our process with any ordinance that is enforcing blight, is in part taking into account due process, which is something that Josh alluded to. The Constitution says we can't take life, liberty, or property without due process of law. And due process really has two elements that we deal with. One is called substantive due process, which just means that we don't enact laws that aren't reasonably related to a legitimate public purpose. Well, blight, there is a public purpose for protecting the health, safety, and welfare of individuals. So in most part, our ordinances do have that public purpose. And the next part of it, though, is the one that I struggle with sometimes with not Section 650, but our other sections, and that's the part of due process that is procedural due process, which is when a person's property is affected by our government action, they have to have adequate notice and adequate opportunity to be heard. We certainly have that with Chapter 650, which is our process that goes through court. So, and we have streamlined this a little bit. Josh and I talked, I don't know, maybe a year or two ago, we had this process where the officer first had to send out a letter to the individual, give them the opportunity to deal with the blight, and then if they didn't comply with that, then we could issue a ticket. There also was this process where we could issue a notice of violation instead of a ticket that went right to court and then issue the ticket. What Josh was finding, I think, and you can comment on this maybe too, Josh, if I'm not speaking accurately, but the officers spent so much time and effort trying to get compliance, because that's all we really want is compliance. We're not interested about fines, cost of the city being able to do something. We just, people, want people to comply with the anti-blight ordinances. And so the officers were spending so much time dealing with compliance, it really eliminated the need to send them a letter, because by that point, they'd already have multiple contacts with the property owner or tenant to try to get compliance. And so we eliminated some of that and streamlined it a little bit, so that when the officer gets to the point where it's clear this person isn't going to comply, then right away, we issue a civil infraction citation. That civil infraction citation, our process requests a formal hearing. You know, people may have heard that you can have informal and formal hearings in district court on civil infraction citations. Informal hearings don't involve the judge. Well, then, if we go to an informal hearing, then we can't get the judge ordering the property owner to clean up the property. And so we skip that step and go right to a formal hearing. And at that hearing, we're looking to usually get a judgment entered, much like Bill was putting up on the screen, which is a judgment that says, you know, the property owner or the tenant is found in violation of the ordinance, we have to have a legal description for the property, and then the order provides that they have a certain fixed amount of time in order to cure the blight. And a lot of that kind of depends on what we request of the judge and what the judge feels is appropriate. If we've got a blighted structure that has to be demolished, the judge is going to give more time than cleaning up junk from a yard like the picture we saw a little while ago. And so that's sort of, you know, how the judge determines how much time he's going to give. Usually for junk, it's maybe 30 days, maybe less if we've got a history of trying to get that issue taken care of. Once the judge does that, we used to go back in and then on a, what's called a show cause hearing, if the person didn't take care of the problem, we'd file a motion, go back for another hearing, asking the judge to authorize the city to go and take action on its own. Well, the judge has allowed us now to pursue these cases like this order says, find in violation, give the defendant a specific time period to cure the blight, and if they don't, authorize the city or its contractors to go in and deal with the problem. We then have an assessment of fines, costs, and now we're also including oftentimes some attorney fees. And then, again, if the city has to go in and take care of the problem, we'll come back in a later time and try to establish what it costs the city to deal with it. Most recently, it was a house that got demolished, and we went back in, and it was over $15,000 that it cost the city to demolish the house, and the judge gave us a lien on the property. Not sure that it will help a whole lot, a lien on a couple of city lots where this property is located, probably it's not worth $15,000 in the first place. But we do have a lien there, and if the property was ever sold, we'd have to get paid. We do have two other ordinances, though, that...
George, can I just interrupt just for a second?
Yeah.
Is there any way to, if they're fined, like say a landlord is fined or the tenant is, a homeowner is fined, is there any way to put that on their property tax bill?
We can lien that. The unpaid costs and fines after 30 days, there's a statute that says we can lien the property. I have seen ordinances that allow it to be added to the assessment rule as part of property taxes. We don't have that in our ordinance. The statute that we use is under the Home Rule City Act, Manistee's Home Rule City, that gives a lien process, not an authorization, though, to add to the tax rule. And so we've talked about that in the last few days, and, you know, if we're going to do that, it probably is something that would require an amendment of the ordinance. I would only want to do it, though, if it gave us some greater priority than the lien gives us, you know, as far as collection. So we're looking at that, though, and if it does give us some greater position in it, then that's what we'll pursue.
We get a property tax bill twice a year.
Well, in the Home Rule City Act, the lien process describes that it does not take priority over property taxes or a mortgage that's, or anything lien that's recorded in advance and prior to that lien. And so when you look at that, you wonder how can we, through an ordinance, get greater position than we can with a lien under the statute?
If they don't pay it, can't they, can't they be charged interest for the non-payment of that portion?
Well, yeah, on a judgment, you get interest as well, but, but yeah, if it's added to the property taxes, you do get that 1% per month added if it's considered unpaid truck taxes.
But if you put it on your, if you put it on their property taxes, they, I mean, they've got to pay their property taxes, you know?
Yeah, well, so what...
Otherwise, if it's a lien, we would have to wait till they sell the property, right?
Or we could foreclose the lien if we wanted to spend the money and go through that process. The question that I still haven't, can't answer yet, we were just talking about this the other day, is if we add a provision in our ordinance, which is the only way I see that we could do that, and other communities have done it, that says that the costs associated with curing the blight is something that we could add to the assessment rule in the property taxes, does that give us a better position than we have under the lien process? And so we'll look at that, and if it does, by all means, let's amend the ordinance and include that.
That seems like would be faster process.
Been talking with Finance Director at Bradford. We do put the water, delinquent water on their refuse, and that is something where annually, the county makes us whole with that. And I've seen other ordinances in other communities I've worked on where it's added there, and then that's kind of more immediate, because the lien, you have to wait till the property's sold or...
Or foreclose it, yes.
Or foreclosure, so.
I just think it would be more beneficial to have it on the taxes, because then they're put on notice that, yeah, now you're going to have to pay your taxes, and you have to pay this bill, just like the water bill. Whereas if you just, if you put a lien on the property, they're like, I don't care, I don't plan on selling it for the next 20 years, I don't have to worry about it. And then that doesn't help the blight situation at all, because they can just keep going.
Yeah, so certainly if we're able to do that, we want to do that.
Okay.
Yeah. The other ordinances that we have are Chapter 654, which is a nuisance provision, and that talks about a property that is, you know, basically a blighted structure but is a nuisance, and city council taking action to authorize city staff or a contractor to go in there and cure that nuisance. I don't like the process set forth in that ordinance. I just don't think there's adequate due process protections. It's from 1960, I think, that ordinance. I've never seen it used, and so I'm not a real fan of that. I'd rather pursue under Section 650 and go through the court proceeding. I know due process is afforded when we go to court, because it's a court hearing and the person's served with notice, and they have the opportunity to come in court and dispute it. So we know we've satisfied the due process requirements with that. I'm not so sure with Section 654. There is, though, another section, and this came up about eight years ago, when I communicated a case to the city manager at the time, and that's Chapter 1454. And that chapter, in part at least, talks about a structure that poses a health risk to the community. And some of it relates to houses that might be fire damaged. And at least in part, it's describing structures that need to be demolished. There was a Michigan Supreme Court case eight years ago, and this is what I had communicated to the city manager at the time, that found that a city ordinance, in this case, it was the city of Brighton in Michigan, that had a provision that authorized its city council to make a determination that a house posed a danger to the health and safety of the community, and that the provisions that they had in that... community, and that the provisions that they had in that ordinance satisfied due process. Michigan Supreme Court said that. Cases appealed to the US Supreme Court, and the US Supreme Court denied, declined to hear the case. And so I'm interested in that, probably only for demolition situations, but that would certainly speed up the process to demolish a house. It would involve counsel in that process, but as long as we tweak that ordinance somewhat to, you know, afford a little bit more due process protections than I think that we have to have to make the ordinance not appealable as a constitutional violation, I think it's something that we could utilize. Again, only for the demolition cases. Everything else that we have, junk and just standard blight that can be repaired or rectified, my preference is to use the Chapter 650 that we've been using, so. Any questions on that? No?
So one issue I wanted to talk to councils about, council about, is adding capacity if we wanted to pursue more aggressive action to eliminate blight, if, you know, obviously it would go through due process, as George stated, but some repeat offenders or just continual issues with, and where kind of immediate action is needed. When I first arrived here, I think 150 Monroe, I noticed there was a board up there that was needed, and typically that would be something we'd call someone, they'd board it up, I think it waited, we eventually demolished it, and I appreciate Chief Glass's pursuit of that. But I think some of these more immediate items with just kind of board ups or just debris removal if someone's not being active or not responding when we're giving them multiple notices, I think we need to be able to progress to actually doing it and then charging them. We could set a cap, and that's kind of, I mean, this is a study session, so we're discussing it, but we could have it something like board up blight cleanup. You mentioned towing vehicles, that's something where if we went to the judge and asked, we'd like to have this vehicle towed, depending on how it's stated in the request, I think that could be granted. Obviously, at that level, the judge can grant extensions, but I think we can always ask. I mean, that's, and documents show that we've been pursuing, you know, tickets and trying to get this resolved. So this is just kind of an RFQ we could put out to get, I don't think we necessarily need a building contractor for some of this work. Ideally, I think there would be a scope of work determined that could be given to the city attorney's office when he goes to the judge, and ultimately it could potentially be rewarded, awarded then. I'll go back to kind of the, but that's kind of what I wanted to see if council's interested in seeing if we could have some contractors do that work. The other option is DPW, but I don't like the idea of using our workers to do some of this work, just because it's pulling away from the streets, the parks, some of these other things that need to be addressed on a daily basis. I had Josh pull together some pictures, I'm sorry, Chief Glass pulled together some pictures of different blight that potentially we could use a contractor for when these things are ongoing. So I'll just kind of get them all open, and we can go through them if you'd like. Sure?
Just to add to this, I don't want to read this, I'm too bad, but, you know, we've heard public comment about our blight ordinance not having teeth, right? So as we're finding, and as the city attorney explained, we're getting these court orders to say, okay, either you pick up your rubbish, or the city can, or you fix your house, the city can, or you demolish your house, the city can. And so now we're stuck with, well, what action can we do? Because the homeowner, the person is not, clearly, if we get to this point, they're not going to do it. So how do we solve the problem? And this is an actual way to affect change and to have a little bit of teeth and actually do something that we can feel to remedy blight. That's been the problem in years past, where we have a house, it's demo, we don't have any money or no way to do it, so it sits there for five, six, seven years, and so this is the answer to, what do we do now? We have a court order to pick up the rubbish, or the city can. Well, the DPW is not going to do it, because they spread them too thin. I don't have any licensed contractors downstairs, so what's the answer? So this would be a solution to that problem, where we actually can do these things that we can, that are tangible, that you can feel, and then a possible path to recoup the finances, so to speak, the city. So it's, again, multifaceted approach to actually solving some of these issues, when this person just will not.
Can I make a comment, too? I've heard a lot about sort of these extensions, and the case goes on and on. It's not the, I haven't had that. There's one case that we had, that there were a number of extensions, mostly because it was a demolition case, and the property owner came into court twice saying, I'm looking to get financing, I want to, I don't want to lose my house, I want to be able to keep my house and express that. And so that case dragged on some, but to be honest, that's the only extension that I have ever had that wasn't something that the city agreed to, in terms of a resolution. And so I really haven't experienced that. My experience is now with the last, I don't know, we've probably had six court cases in the last month or two, those are all, at that first hearing, the judge is giving a limited time to cure the blight violation, and then if it's not cured, authorizing the city to go do it.
I have a couple of questions. I don't know where to start. So who would pay for this? Like, if we had contractors, if we could get contractors that would actually do it, and they wouldn't need a permit to do this work, because, like, who would pay for this?
So what idea I had, I know we talked about using ARPA money for a housing fund. This could be kind of a revolving fund, where if it's on the tax roll, we get the relief from the county at the end of the, so it would be, and I think we want to be careful about not spending too much, but just kind of the major issues, but I think we do a couple trials with it. But first, we'd have to amend the ordinances Mr. Saylor mentioned.
Okay, and then I have another question, because I'm looking at this list, and it's like rental, rental, rental. It goes back to the rental inspections, too, that should be catching a lot of this stuff, because how 11 Filer Street, granted, it just sold, but how 11 Filer Street got a certificate of compliance for rental for all of these years, when the whole side of it, there's stuff missing, there's broken windows, like, that should be addressed when they do the rental certificate. I just had them do one, and I thought for sure that it was not going to pass, like, it needed, the shingles are blown off, there's a two-by-four holding up the basement, there's a foot of water in the basement, and it passed with no repairs. Like, I don't, I don't understand that.
Do you know the address of that property?
It goes hand in hand, so, I don't want to give you the address, but it goes hand in hand, like, they should be catching this stuff, a lot of these, so they don't have to go out and say, oh, okay, well, this is another rental, like, why do they keep getting certificates if they are clearly blighted structures and need work? I don't-
I can follow up with 11 Filer, and I can, and if you give me the other address, I'd like to take a look at that, too.
Follow up with all of them, like, I don't, they're on their third cycle, so all of these places are getting inspected again, and it just, that one just sold, so it should have been inspected.
And I do think with rental properties, you have the tenant, you have the landlord, I think, pursuing in court for some of, I mean, the rental certificate, you know, perhaps they shouldn't get a rental certificate, but I also think getting rid of the blights is probably another step, too, depending on what the issue is there.
I think that's true. We did amend the rental inspection ordinance, though, to include that it was not, property's not in violation of the blight or the city ordinances, so that is a requirement of their rental inspection.
A lot of the stuff that is a problem is on their checklist that they're going through, you know? You can't have broken windows, you can't have, you know, missing siding, missing shingles, um-
But even if it, even if it's with, if it's in between, you know, a three-year, the three-year period, we still pursue under the anti-blight ordinance, and so if that property is blighted, you know, let's contact the-
Some of them have been blighted for, Jesus, longer than I've been alive, and they still keep getting certificates. It's frustrating, because they shouldn't be getting certificates. The landlord should be, say, hey, you know, you've got to clean these up, they've been like this for the last couple decades. And I still think that we need to put something on the rental certificates that they require homeowner's insurance, so we're not stuck with the bill if something happens, and then we've got to, we've got to tear the house down.
Yeah, I don't think homeowner's insurance will do, give any coverage for that, but, I mean, unless it was a structure by-
If the house was on fire-
Yeah, if it's a fire-
Yeah, that's what I mean, that we've got these rentals that don't have homeowner's insurance on them. So I think it's, I still think it needs to be a requirement for a rental, that you carry homeowner's insurance. I mean, it's a requirement, if you carry a mortgage, you have to carry homeowner's insurance. So I think that would help us out a lot, because then, you know, if the house burns down and that they don't have homeowner's insurance, they can just wash their hands, and now it's our problem, we've got to find the money to tear it down.
Yeah, we did get that benefit from the last one we had to take down from fire, I think, that they had insurance and we were able to use those funds to help defer the cost.
Well, maybe, I don't know if landlords require this in their leases, but usually tenants can get tenant insurance to ensure their belongings inside the unit, so, I mean, there's two ways to cover it. I mean, a renter can get renters insurance.
I think it's going a long way when you have government enacting laws that require a tenant to have renters insurance, or, you know, requiring those types of things.
Rental insurance won't cover the building.
No.
It wouldn't help us with the blight issue.
Yeah, it wouldn't happen.
Well, I'm not talking about the outside of the building, I'm talking about just the inside, because obviously there's some rentals that I've walked through that are not habitable, the way that they've kept them, from my experience.
So I do like the list, and I like it as more of a helpful thing, as a resource for the homeowners or the landlords. I kind of have another approach to it. I almost feel sometimes we nitpick too much. I kind of like what Josh goes with of getting the priorities and not going around and getting, okay, this car looks bad, let's just stay with those. I kind of feel, I mean, I get complaints all the time, why are they picking on me? Why don't we go for the drug houses? And I look at that more than, like, the car missing a tire, or, I mean, sometimes I just feel like we're being bullies, and we need the bigger stuff. So I want to help people, not trying to put them in a better, and not put them down more of a hardship, is what I'm coming to-
I think we, you know, with the NRB, and maybe Chief Glass can talk about that, but I think there's different, we want to have different tools for different situations, and I think this is kind of the heavy-handed approach, but I think the NRB and what happened over on Eighth Street with the officer helping getting siding, I think there's, you can take it from there, Chief.
Yeah, just-
I love that story.
Yeah, just a segue, just a segue, something the NRB is working on, he's working on, NRBC, is identifying five rubbish homes, homes that contain rubbish, and five structures that meet the criteria, they could provide possible solutions for, volunteer groups or whatnot. These are homes where the person can't physically or financially comply. The issue we come across and why we're presenting this solution is, we're coming into contact with people in court who we feel could comply, they will not. So this is a solution, so we don't have the houses caving in for two decades, and we're able to provide a solution in that regard. Our officers, having them assigned to the district, are able to delineate, well, this person's 90 years old, I talked to Councilman Bachmann about one, just before, this person's 90 years old, he can't clean this up, let's find a solution. Write him a ticket and get a contractor to clean it up, that might not be a solution there. But for John Smith over here, who says, eh, I don't care if you find me out, I'm not cleaning my stuff up, we don't have a solution. And that's why I feel a lot of this blight has remained over decades, because there's no one to have a, I don't want to say out of the box solution, but a unique solution that is focused on results. This isn't something we would utilize for everyone, no, it's not. It's for someone who is, that is a major case that we need to remedy, and that we don't have any alternative solutions for. We're working with the NRBC on getting volunteer groups, maybe some financial assistance for those who qualify that way. That's why it's so important to have an officer in each district, because they know all the situations. We go through Kozieosco, you know, 1, 2, 3 Kozieosco Street, what's the situation there? That's so-and-so, they lost their job, blah, blah. Or it's, well, he says, my property's my property, you can't do anything about it. We can differentiate between those cases. Where blight has hit a dead end is when we go to court and the judge says, Mr. Smith, you're cleaning up, and the city will. In the past, we've had no resources. Demolition's easy, we just find some money. Thankfully, city council, your leadership has provided funds in the last two years, but prior to that, it was either find a grant, or it sits for six, seven, eight years. So, and as our blight enforcement kind of nails down, we're going to get more court cases that are going to say, fix your garage, it's caving in itself, or the city can. And we don't want to have a dead end where it sits there for five years because we don't have a solution. This would be a solution, or just one of those tools in that toolbox to go to. So it's not for everything, but there are those situations where we're dead end. This is how we can impact that, and it's a creative way to possibly have a fund that in some regards could replenish itself. That's the idea. So, again, something never been proposed, but again, we're dealing with blight, something that's 30 years old, and we've been dead end on some of these cases, and this is the reason why, we haven't had a solution at this point. So, again, the big picture here is the police, the NRBC, and this path here is a multifaceted solution to really address this thing. And that's, the analogy, that's the kitchen sink of this problem. Now, it's not going to be solved in a year, two years, but this is a program, this is an approach that really utilizes what we think we can do with it. And really, not just a soundbite, but really provides a solution, we feel. That's the intent here.
I have one question in the process. You've asked the newly created commission, the Neighborhood Restoration Beautification Commission, to identify five homes with rubbish on the outside?
Our officers are going to provide the information to them.
And, but are you asking the members of the commission to talk to these homeowners?
Nope. Well, again, we met one time, it was a very productive meeting, is possibly come up with a volunteer group, again, to address some of these homes. Again, these are the homes where we don't have compliance, because someone physically can't do it, or maybe financially can't do it. And we've talked about different volunteer groups, we know of some volunteer groups, I've mentioned religious organizations, things like that. It's a matter of, according to bylaws, identifying resources, additional resources to address these things. So, I don't want NRBC members out in the public knocking on doors.
Okay.
To be very clear about that.
Clear, that that's not their job.
Right. In fact, Friday, we're actually taking a bus tour of the city, so they can really understand and see blight firsthand. But I just wanted to clarify or add to that, anyways.
Hey, Josh, when you say you wanted five houses or something, and then you don't look at all these little ones, because you're working on the big problem, then other people see these little problems as going by the wayside.
I understand that point. It's not that we don't look at them, but we don't focus our energy. Those are mostly complaint-driven, okay? If someone calls on it, we'll deal with it. If we drive through your district and see it, we'll deal with it. But the junk vehicle in Jim Smith's, not Jim, John Smith's backyard, that no one sees but one neighbor, that's not a priority for us. We have, unfortunately, we have bigger fish to fry. The house on Eighth Street that's caving in itself that 50 people see a day, that's where our effort needs to be focused on, because that's, you talk about broken windows theory, that's what people feel. And so if you try to tackle it all, you're going to spread yourself so thin that at the end of the day, you look at, what impact do we have? Well, we didn't have much impact, because we're chasing, we're spreading ourselves too thin. We have to focus our efforts on the major cases.
I think the word you're looking for is triage, what like do with DR.
A medical, that is the, that is, you know, sprained ankle, broken leg, gunshot wound.
Got you.
Work in that order. So we're not ignoring those things, but that's more complaint-driven. Sometimes I wish our officers would see more, driving around, because I drive around at lunch and do my blight patrol, that's something that we address with them. So it's not that we ignore that, but we want to focus our efforts on these structures and major blight things, because lord knows, they take a lot of their time.
I like it, I can feel some energy here. Let's do this.
So Chief, honestly, I think overall, your department over the last year has done a remarkable job. You know, again, you're talking about something that is very, very challenging and difficult, and there are so many moving parts. You know, again, you're talking about something that is very, very challenging and difficult, and there are so many moving parts. And the one that I agree with you on is that we can't treat every blighted property the same. You know, there are people out there that this is their home, they've lived there, and the aesthetics of their home may not be up to my standard or yours, but that shouldn't be our decision to put them out on the street, and, and we've got to be careful, because if we don't have the solution like you're addressing, then that's really unfair. And, and, and I'll, I'll just use an analogy with something that we've been working on with people who need handicap ramps, okay? Um, you know, again, people get hurt, they're now wheelchair-bound. Their homes, especially most of our homes in Manistee, are not wheelchair-accessible. And, and in order to comply with the wheelchair accessibility is more complicated than, than most people would understand because of the degree of angles required and the property available, right? So, we find people who need the ramp, yet they can't afford it. Well, where do you, how do you get there? And I think we're in the same boat with, with people with siding. We have to have funds, we have to establish ways where people can reach out, and, and based on your, your ability to pay, we come up with a, a sliding scale to be able to help them meet the criteria or the requirements. And, you know, and things have gotten expensive, you know? I have an older home, and we painted it. I went to look for siding, and the bill came in over ninety thousand dollars to side my house. Well, okay then. Now, that, that makes it...
Brought it to you, right?
Well, you know, I can, I can paint my house three times, or I can site it once, okay? So then I'm looking, okay, I'm seventy years old, seventy-eight, nine, so I'm doing math, right? Determining which is the most cost-effective solution. There are people that aren't in that same position. So I, I love the idea that you're working towards having some kind of a fund, and, and that's where I think we, as City Council, could help. Back in the sixties, and I've mentioned this before, Manistee had something called the Tuesday Committee, and the Tuesday Committee had set aside funds to be able to assist with people who had blighted properties, to be able to get them sited, to get them painted, and what they did was they assessed that against their property. So if they could make their payments, that's fine, if not, it just went in against a lien, so when that property sold, and again, most of the time, this was for, for seniors, or people, you know, of a certain age, they, it just became an assessment against their property. But in the meantime, they lived in a home that had siding that was appropriate, and at the end, then their heirs were required to make the payment back. And it was, I thought it was a revolving fund. I've asked, and I guess that history has been lost somewhere, but I, I'm sure that it existed back in the, in the sixties.
But at the time, you tore a lot of places, though?
They did, but they also fixed a lot of places. And, and it was, and again, this one might be a side for us to take some of the money that we have and set it aside as a revolving fund.
I think the other aspect I'm hoping with this Housing North is we work on a rehabilitation loan, it's kind of, I think, more of what, of what you're looking at, and, and that would be a program, and so that is something we'll be looking at as well.
Yeah, and that's the other side. Right now, a rehabilitation loan is nine percent or higher. Yeah, right. Well, I can buy a, a new house for four percent, but to fix the one I'm living in costs me nine or more.
I, I got a question. Um, the, the fee amount, the fine amount is two hundred dollars, is it, does that double or anything if you're like a repeat, just constantly?
For blight?
Yes.
Two fifty?
It's two, it's, well, it's up to the judge. We, we, ours says two fifty for a first, and five hundred for a second, but ultimately, that is up to the judge, uh, to determine what's the appropriate fine, even though that's the way we've set our schedule up. When we get a portion of that and a portion of the cost...
And where does that go?
The, the fine and cost, uh, it's divided, uh, you know, part goes to the county, I believe, and then part comes back to the city, just like, you know, criminal offenses, too, where they're split. Um, the, there is an attorney fee component that I've been using, though, as well, and that should all come back to the city.
Okay. Do we, like, where does it go, though?
Well, we, I, I don't, we've had conversations with Mr. Bradford about potential ideas of how, for lack of a better term, feed that fund, have fees or things come back into that fund. We started having those conversations. That's probably a good question for him.
We can follow up on that.
That's exactly where I was going with it. I was thinking, if that money is coming back, why can't we set up a fund to use that for blight resources?
Right, to keep it sustainable.
Yes.
And so we've talked about those strategies, but I think this is the first step in seeing what, if there's interest here first, and then we can pursue the other.
And, and just, you know, I'm cutting to the chase a little bit here, um, council has to be willing to put up the money and not expect to get it back.
Yep.
I mean, ultimately, that's what we have to do. And I, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll pursue these things with the ordinance, fines, costs, and try to replenish the fund to some degree, but understand that, uh, you're not going to get it all back, and you might not get a majority of it back, but you just have to be willing to expend that money.
Right, but, I mean, if we had it to where we could just put it in a blight fund, I mean, a little is better than nothing.
Yeah, yeah, we, we talked about that the other day, of making sure that, that money that comes back in that we collect as the result of a blight court case goes back to the same fund from which it came.
Yeah. Is there, and do we have, like, an amount of, like, how much we've collected over, like, the last year or so?
So I will look into that, and I'll get that back to council.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Anybody else have anything to add on blight?
Is there a consensus to pursue adding the tax rule as an option? I think I'm seeing...
Favor of it.
Okay, so, bring that to a future council meeting, and then I'll put out this RFQ and see what interest we get, and...
Along with establishing the fund, I think, at the same time, I think it's, it should be collected. It should be both.
Are you, and I think, so as, I know we had an account in, in the budget, we talked about a housing revolving fund with ARPA. Um, is that something potentially we could use for some of these first ones? I would think, I would think it's kind of, boardups to me are a big one, they're not that expensive, but they seal off the building and make sure people can't get in, and make sure animals aren't getting in their road and harbages, something like that. So I would think we'd move on a couple of those, once we have, uh, the ordinance in place, and then just kind of do a couple tests with that, see how it plays out with the, if that makes sense.
And then also maybe find one or two of the five that you were talking about that need the assistance, being able to provide the financial assistance to get them to where they need to be, uh, so they're no longer blighted.
I'm hoping the NRB can help with that, but also, once we have, maybe setting up a rehab program. So that'd be a little bit separate from this, but I think that, you're right, that's another tool for, to address blight.
It's the funding to be, you know, it's, it's all about the money sometimes, you know? If there's no money there, then all good intentions go nowhere.
Okay. So maybe we use part of that housing as a loan fund as well? That's a, okay.
I think that we need to be very careful with that, though, because that one picture that you have on there is not a, is not a house. It's a, it's a business, so I don't think they should qualify for us fixing the side of their building.
I wholeheartedly agree. We're looking at basically for homeowners primarily, and homeowners, and with a sliding scale based on their ability to pay. If, if you're a landlord, you know, it's a business, so...
Yeah, it's a matter of just establishing that criteria, which, and we've talked about this in our BC, is that we're not going to help places where the tenant and the landlord, no, this is owner-occupied things, they can't financially, physically. So this is, that's, this criteria we can establish and, and bring to the city manager and say, this is a good candidate for this fund. This is a good candidate for NRBC volunteer group, things like that. That's why having one police officer per district tell you about this family and that house is so important. Uh, otherwise, you could, you know, be paying for something you really shouldn't be. So I think it's a very good point.
You, you know, not to be the naysayer always, but, um, this is the first I've heard about the loaning process. That needs to be explored legally, because loaning taxpayer money to someone to improve their residential real estate, I think that's fraught with problems. We're able to do that downtown with the DDA, because there's statutes that allow it. Um, I'm not aware of the statutes that allow us to loan money to someone to put siding on their house or paint their house or whatever, so we'll have to look at that a little closer, too.
I also think that there's a, I think that there's still a program through the county.
Yeah.
Qualify for, like, if you're, like, low income and you need siding, or you need windows, or there's those programs.
There, there was, and Five Cap had one as well, um, and, and then they took a loan on property, because they had a statute that allowed it.
I explored that in two thousand twenty, but all those dried up. It's something maybe the NRBC can revisit and see how those funds loosened up now, that were a little bit removed from COVID. The Rural, Rural Development Fund also had grant funds, but those all stopped, because we were exploring those for Two Duffy Street, and COVID hit, and those funds, they put a stop on all those funds, so that's, that's why the NRBC is so important. Maybe we could explore those and say, hey, have those funds loosen back up, and again, it's not one solution for one problem, it's, here's a solution, which one's the best fit. And so, uh, ARPA proposes a unique opportunity for this that we wouldn't have had ten years ago. You probably couldn't have got this idea ten years ago, because you didn't have the money. But this is a unique situation, um, for this type of problem.
And, and maybe, Mr. Saylor, the solution is having the ARPM funds moved to an organization that can provide the mechanism.
Yeah, well, certainly worth exploring and figuring out, you know, how do we go about doing it, if we can.
It may not be the best venue to do this work. Somebody may be more suited to be able to make it happen.
And with, uh, you know, that Housing North, you know, I, I volunteered to be the co-chair, and my plan was to work with that position to get a rehab program, whether that's through MISTAA or some other entity, but we can, we will be looking at that, so... All right, well, thank you, everyone, for the feedback, so...
Are there any issues that council would like to bring up at this time, moving on to other? Mr. Bachman, you got any others?
Nope.
Nope. Nope. Mr. Gabowski?
I was just wondering, uh, Mr. Bachman brought up one time about an investigation you were supposed to be doing with the city manager.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah.
And pertaining to what?
Remember that?
Talking about the Seth Pratt issue, with, with, does Seth Pratt the fourth, three issue, do we resolve that, or did we not resolve that? Is it closed?
It was, met with Mr. Pratt, myself, the mayor, Jeff McCula, um, Mr. and Mrs. Pratt. We had, uh, I think George Saylor was there, we had about a two-hour discussion with, about the issue. I think they had the bill, um, I contacted, um, the, what was it, the plumber, and he stated it was work that was done on private property, that was the two hundred and fifty dollar bill, so I guess the resolution, I think we kind of went through it with him, but, um, in terms of the city paying that bill, that was not, that was not something the city would do.
So we communicated with the Pratt that, that somehow it was investigated and the complaint had been closed. That's, I mean, he made a specific complaint, and if we close it, we should let him know that we closed the complaint, and we're satisfied that the city manager acted in our best behalf, or however you want, I don't know how you, why you closed it, but we need to communicate that to the person who made the complaint.
Okay, so he submitted FOIA documents, or requested FOIA documents, I provided all those, um, they did stand up and leave the meeting.
He just made a, he just made a, I don't want to belabor, he made a complaint against you, and the mayor investigated it. Everybody felt, I believe, that he did what you should be doing, and I think at some point in time, we need to do it, to close that complaint by just sending a letter saying, you made a complaint, we looked into it, we resolved it, we're satisfied the city manager's action, and the issue is closed. Simple as that, and then we just...
I've talked to Mr. Seth Pratt, the younger Pratt, nu- numerous times, because he's the one that, that made the complaint, and I have dealt with the complaint with Mr. Gamble.
Okay.
So I consider it closed.
Perfect. You've done what I've done, okay.
Okay.
I just have one, um, Mr. Gamble, you submitted a, a memo to council on, uh, fees related to repair and maintenance and establishing, uh...
Ordinary repair.
Stabilizing, or, uh, aligning our fees and what we consider to be repair and, normal repair and maintenance along with the county, and I just wondered, can you give us an update on where we are with that?
I submitted that to council, it is on our website now, um, I don't have that. But we did, we did issue that, and I sent it over to SafeBill as well, that they are notified that we consider those certain items ordinary repair, and then there's links to the code, if, um, and if they have any questions, they can contact SafeBill, but, um...
And so, so far, if somebody wants to replace a window, they don't need to get a permit anymore?
Correct, if it's the same size.
Yep.
So there's some, I think that's the other thing, we have to make sure that it is the same size, they can't just kind of put foam in between or things like that, so I'd ask, there are certain, um, requirements with that, but yes. I haven't had, knock on wood, and maybe I will in the future, but so far, I haven't had any feedback.
So like, if you were to replace a toilet, you don't need a permit, that's not an issue anymore?
Yeah, and it should be all, it's all stated in that memo, I can...
I saw the memo, I just, I just hadn't gotten any feedback on how that went with, with SafeBill. They've, they've given a thumbs up, saying, oh, they're going to comply with that from this point forward, and they're not going to be, uh, requiring, um...
Correct. We found, I believe, middle ground with how that was worded.
Good. Thank you. That's, that's awesome. Thank you.
Anybody else? Look at me expectantly, I don't have anything. Um, before we adjourn, um, I just want to say, I'm happy to see the warm weather return. There you go.
Mayor, I'll just add one update, I believe, uh, council member Martin Pontiac asked about the gateway. So I talked with Tom St. Dennis yesterday, it was, they were waiting on, kind of, a response from Eagle that it was good to go. They had to submit a, yeah, hazardous waste plan, but there was really not, I mean, it was kind of a light bulb and some other things, but they had to get correspondence back. They're, hopefully, they can start in a couple of weeks, but they do need all those clearances, because we have a couple entities involved, but we're hoping it starts.
The fencing looks really bad. Can you come in? Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Take a motion, Richard.
Sure.
Richard.